I got it all muted here.
Yeah, it's green.
Okay.
And mute? And mute?
Here is a special invitation from the pastors and leaders of our local Christian churches. Every one of you and those listening in are invited to the May 4th National Day of Prayer being held in Riverside Park at noon. There are several prayer events taking place in southwest Florida and all over America, but the first Thursday in May. But again, ours in Bonita is at noon at Riverside Park. Chairs and water will be provided, and y'all are hardly welcome, and heaven knows, America needs prayer. So let's pray. Father, thank you for these dedicated city council members and staff who faithfully serve our community. Give them wisdom and divine strategies for effective programs and ways to enhance the economics and living quality of southwest Florida. Keep them strong and healthy. We ask that you show them ways to continue to reach out to bring healing and recovery for all those who were affected by Hurricane Ian. And as our country is sadly in such turmoil, only you, Lord, can heal the heart of this nation. Restore integrity and mutual honor in all areas of our culture: families, business, government, media, sports, entertainment, and arts; education, the church, and military law enforcement and first responders. This starts with each of us reaching out to help others and endeavoring to listen and understand even if we do not agree. During this special time of year, as many celebrate Passover or Easter, may the power of God bring restoration and healing to our broken nation and to our community. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. We pledge allegiance, and you sit on number three. One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have the roll call by our new city clerk, Mike Sheffield. Thank you.
Councilmember Bogaz. Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Fullick.
Present.
Councilmember Forbes.
He's not here.
He should be by Zoom.
Is he coming in person or is he going to be on the phone?
He's going to be electronic, and once we have him connected up, you'll need to approve a motion to allow him to appear remotely.
Okay, I make the motion, we allow him to appear. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz. Councilmember Purdon.
All right.
Councilmember Carr.
All right.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Yes.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Okay.
Councilmember Forbes, could you please unmute your microphone? Just go ahead, proceed.
Yeah, okay. All right, the mayor's welcome. Y'all, y'all welcome, come down here to your house, it's your government, it's your responsibility to help us guide this country, guide this city, and bring in my image of God's earth, God's kingdom, with truth and justice and mercy for everyone. So thank you for coming. I missed the approval of agenda, I guess the agenda's set, we're good already. Public comment. Any public comments on the agenda items, except for 12 and 13 at this time?
Only twelve, twelve.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Low City Council, my name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Bonita 30 years ago. I spend almost every day in our downtown, and I'm here to speak to you this morning about Agenda Item 13A, which we'll call Designating Downtown Pedestrian Friendly. And pretty incredibly, it's been about two years since we started discussing this issue. There was some misinformation in our community that we had to get past. We did that with the help of real experts to the city who conducted studies, thankfully, and appreciate you folks for moving that forward. And today, you have in front of you an ordinance for the first reading. And importantly, that ordinance, which will do a great job at addressing all sides of this issue, needs to be accompanied by a resolution to make it specific to the downtown. And when you have the ordinance plus the resolution, we'll succeed in making downtown pedestrian-friendly. It's a really important finishing touch. And there are tons of reasons why we need to do it, just based on basic logic. If you think through that, you know, we just heard there's going to be a National Prayer Day in Riverside Park on the 4th, that's a Thursday. Thank goodness we're having this meeting in the quiet of City Hall, because if we're in the park right now at 9:15, we wouldn't be able to hear ourselves think, never mind one another talk, because of the nature of the heavy through truck traffic there, which is a reminder, our city's traffic expert said is four to six times what the Florida Department of Transportation would prescribe for a road like that. But there are tons of other reasons. It gets to protecting civilians. We have the youngest in our community to the oldest in our community walking those sidewalks every day. They deserve protection. We're supposed to have bikeable streets there, but no one bikes on a street loaded with trucks. We're supposed to preserve our roadways. Our own traffic expert testified to the fact that we're wearing away the road services prematurely with the heavy through truck traffic there. We had a cement truck issue recently that was really unfortunate. We need these basic finishing touches to provide taxpayers a return on their investment. They've invested tens of millions of dollars down there, and it's important that we institute the necessary finishing touches to make this a reality. We need to do this because other cities do it. From downtown Sarasota to downtown St. Pete to downtown Delray to downtown St. Augustine and Fort Lauderdale and on and on and on. This is what people do to activate their downtowns. We can do it, and we can do it while still making good exceptions for locals. This is clear in the ordinance in front of you. The locals will not be put out. They will be allowed to do their local deliveries and their local pickups and park their cars in there. And we need to think about the fact that our truck intensity is way too high. This isn't a matter of being 10% too high, it's a matter of being 400 to 600% too high. So those are all the reasons based on logic, there are probably many more. But it's as simple as the fact that the comprehensive plan of the city requires it. In its opening sentences, the comprehensive plan calls out the fact that this is to be a unique gathering place for the community. In Policy 1.1.7, the comprehensive plan says that to preserve the scenic, aesthetic, historic, and environmental attractions down there, that we are to accept reduced traffic flow. In Policy 1.1.0.5 of the comprehensive plan of the city, it says specifically, the city is not to encourage or prioritize trucks in our downtown. So the reasons could not be more clear, whether you base it on logic or you base it on the documents that are effectively the constitution for our city. So the good news is, after years of talking through this, the solution's upon us. Please move this ordinance and please ask city staff to draft a resolution to move this forward. Thank you very much.
Ron George, Little Hickory Island. I'm not going to try to outdo Kyle's presentation, I just wanted to go on the record and say I support the truck ordinance for downtown, and hopefully that'll improve the environment down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can you hear me?
Fred.
You do hear me?
Fred, we hear you.
Good.
I don't know what the hell you're doing to me here. Number nine. Proclamation. Okay. Whereas, April has been designated National Fair Housing Month, commemorating the 55, 50-fifth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, whereas fair housing laws provide the opportunity for all citizens to reside in a decent, safe housing, free of discrimination because of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or disability. Therefore, thereas, the city of Bonita Springs is committed to a community open to all citizens, seek to ensure all residents are aware and educated about the fair housing laws. Therefore, now therefore, I, Fred, I, Rick Steinmeier, Mayor of Bonita Springs, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month. The city of Bonita Springs calls upon all citizens to recognize that compliance with the U.S. Fair Housing Law is equitable, is the equitable way to guarantee fair housing practices for all citizens. Thank you very much. I wish it's, you don't have to be a citizen to be treated properly. Thank you. Okay. Now we go up for a present, presentation.
I'm going to let Arlene present this.
Thank you. This is presented to Clara Fetti as of the 31st day of March 2023, in appreciation and recognition for your 10 years of public service to the city of Bonita Springs. Thank you, Clara.
Thank you.
And just to share with you, Clara is one of our other unsung heroes in our finance department. She crunches numbers all day long and makes sure we're in compliance with all of our grants and all of our spending, and double and triple checks all of us so that we stay out of trouble, so.
We make sure we all pay our bills.
Yes, and we pay our bills on time, correct. And then Clara's supervisor is Lisa, and they've worked previously together a long, long, long time, so I'll let her share.
It's okay. We just wanted to express our gratitude. Clara moved to our area from Ohio, and as soon as she moved to Ohio, we connected, and she's been working for us. She lives in Cape Coral, she makes quite a commute, but we are grateful for all of her hard work. Thank you.
Let's take a look at the consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any, any comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Councilman Purdon.
Sorry, aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Just give him a minute.
Here.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Okay.
Councilmember Forbes, could you confirm that that was an aye?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any comments about our agenda that we just passed, sir?
I just had a question from Matt with respect to F, the nourishment of the beach. Do you have any idea what the timeframe is for that?
It would be in the, in the fall. We're still working through extensive permit modifications to an existing project, so we're trying, this project is a little different in nature than the one that normally happens on the north end of the beach, but we're trying to utilize the same construction technique, by and large part, not entirely. And so there's, there's been countless emails between the federal agencies and the state agencies to try to amend those permits, but it looks like it'll start in the fall and proceed through into the spring, you know, maybe, maybe early summer of this coming year, but it's still a little bit, you know, unclear. What this will allow us to do, and we will do with the approval of this, is start to pursue easements. We have to get the form kind of harmonized between the county and ourselves, but we'll ultimately follow up, probably retaining a firm to assist us in that, to do mass mailings in a massive campaign, because no sand with this project can be placed without easements because it's all on private property.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll move along to the mayor and council items. Do you have any items to report or comment on at this time?
No, sir, we didn't have any submitted agenda items at this, at this meeting.
Okay, we have a public hearing on lease a Cafe Life. Anybody here from Cafe Life?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, Mr. Sheffield and I have discussed it from going forward, he's going to read out the title of ordinances, so I'm going to turn it over to Mike Matt.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
This is a second reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs authorizing the lease of a portion of real property within Leitner Neighborhood Park to Cafe of Life and providing for an effective date.
It just sounds much better when he does it.
Really does, really does.
And with this, Mayor and Council, this item is because we have a charter requirement that any, any long-term lease or lease of real property valued at over $15,000 must be enacted by ordinance. So the Cafe of Life, if you recall, earlier in the year, we did the first reading. We, because of obvious things that have happened in the last several months, we did not follow up and finalize that, but this will allow us to enter into the renewal of their lease.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comment? This is a 10-year, 10-year lease, right? Yeah. Because I remember we went for 10 years, right, Jesse?
It might have been five.
It was five.
I thought it was five. It was five or 10.
Yeah.
Oh, it was 10?
They're going back and forth.
10 is, I'm 10, 10 is what it was. I think we started with five and we got to 10.
Okay, very good.
Could Derek confirm?
I'm looking, I'm trying to pull up, I have to pull up the, the last one, the internet's a little slow. Do you have any objections to the term of this one?
No.
It says another.
It was, it was, it was as opposed to a five-year, was what it was, so it was going to be a five-year, we went with a 10.
The original contract had called for it to be a five-year, they requested to go to 10 years, so they're asking, so it was an additional 10 years. The original one was 10 years because of the funds that they invested in building that facility.
Right, right, yep.
Okay. Vote, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Enthusiastically aye.
All right, yeah. Okay, city attorneys report?
Next item, I'm going to turn again, I'm going to turn over the reading to Sheffield.
This is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, amending the Bonita Springs City Code, Chapter 40, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, and creating a new Article Four, Limitations on Through Truck Traffic Providing Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, and Modifications That May Arise From Consideration at Public Hearings, and an Effective Date.
Motion moved to second reading.
Second.
Very quickly, because there is a, we were requesting additional responses from the Sheriff's Department on the, on the enforceability and some of the language requests, I have sent it to their office, I would request that we move it to the May 5th?
May 3rd.
May 3rd meeting for second reading.
That's an evening meeting.
Correct, and that would be in compliance with the second reading.
This is not, this is just so we can write the rules and regulations.
Correct.
For how we're going to enforce this, it's not, this is just the beginning, friends. Okay.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my, and then go with tabling, my motion would be to agree with Derek to table it.
Well, no, all I would need is the, that the motion maker and second agree that the motion be to move it to the, to the third.
I agree.
And I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Come on, Fred.
Trueog, if you're listening, poke him with a stick. Poke him.
Unmute.
Councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, there we go.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, city managers' items.
Thank you. I'm actually going to refer this one to Matty. So this is to authorize a pre-disaster mitigation grant application. We received a congressional note in last year's federal budget, and in order for us to continue with the application, we would have to advise that in the next fiscal year, we would provide the appropriate match, which I believe is a million.
So this is, you may recall, we were asking permission to send some letters to potential property owners for acquisition if they were interested, above and beyond the current acquisition projects that we have going on. And so we have a pool of folks that may be interested in this project. The funding, you know, appears to be capped at about $5 million, but it would require a match should we be successful, which we're pretty confident we're going to be, but that'll require about a million dollar match as we come into next year's budget.
And this is a voluntary?
Yes, sir.
Buyout for people to get flooded quite often, basically?
Well, well, not, not only that, it's, it's, we had a broad enough scope that it's, it allows us to pursue properties along those lines, but also if there are any tracts of property that would be interested, you know, say that are in the floodway or floodplain, you know, that would be a benefit for maybe a future water quality or, or water quantity project, or even just for open space.
But it's all voluntary?
It's all voluntary, yes.
Property owner, it's all voluntary. We're not taking anybody's property.
No, sir.
So just to be clear, the motion that we would need from councils to authorize staff to submit the grant application, and with the commitment that should we, should we receive the grant funds, we would provide for the appropriate match in the next fiscal year.
Motion.
Approved.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Very good, motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My next item update on Hurricane Ian recovery, I would ask that John Dahmer, Director of Community Development, come forward. We've all been receiving a lot of emails regarding community development, so he just has some statistical updates for you of where we are, so keep you informed, and we'll probably continue this right now as a monthly update as well.
I think this is the right one. Nope, that is not the right one. Here we go. I got. Morning, Mayor and Council. I tried to learn my lesson last time, I put one graph on each slide so I can read them from here, so hopefully this is a little bit easier to understand. Starting off, I know that every once in a while, on occasion, you get copied on emails of what's going on in our department, somebody does get an email back or a response, so just kind of get you a feel for, for what we're doing on a day-to-day basis and how the department's functioning. So if you look at this first slide, this deals with calls that just come into the main number. So if you dial the 444-6150 number, this is recording that. So basically, we're getting somewhere in the neighborhood, on average, of about 250 calls a day just to the main number, not to direct numbers or to, to cell phones. The second slide deals with the hurricane effort and average daily calls, and this gets to the restoration and repair effort for the permitting counter. So we are averaging somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,200 to 1,300 people per month that come to the permitting counter. If you look at the line underneath, this tells you what it was from last year, so you can see that we've had a little bit of an increase. And so we're, we're dealing with, you know, anywhere from about 150 to 200 people a day that come into the permitting counter. Not the number of permits they're submitting, because we do have permit runners and people that do this, that are submitting anywhere from five to 20 permits at a time. So each one of those people doesn't represent one permit, they just represent one person that's coming to the counter. The second slide deals with the average numbers, so you can see our average numbers are also up per day. This is the submittals, so we did have a little bit of a drop last month. I think that what we're seeing is not so much a lack of activity, but I think that if you look at the flow of everyone after the storm, looking for contractors to hire and starting to get that initial work done, those plans were put together, and I think that we're dealing with in February, probably the, the peak of, of a surge for checks. So I think that that's when you started to see those insurance checks start to come in. They'll continue to kind of dribble in depending on when people were able to start the process and work their way through. And that's basically that, the average per day. And here it gets into the restoration permits, this one might be a little bit difficult to read from the seats. The darker orange at the bottom deals with restoration permits, the middle, it deals with repair permits, and then the top deals with temporary housing. So we did six temporary housing permits last month, those are basically those travel trailers or mobile homes that people are placed into either by the state or by FEMA. We had done 90 of those in February and 49 of those in January. So we are starting to get people back in some sort of a housing to bring them back to a little bit of normalcy. And this breaks it down on a very exciting pie chart that deals with the same numbers. And this gets into a little bit of the emails that we're dealing with. It's kind, because we have a handful of general emails, whether it's to the permitting desk or whether it's for general planning questions or for just general community development, it's kind of difficult to bring all those together for average numbers, but basically to general emails, we average about 250 a day. Could be as low as 200, it could be a little over 300, depending on what's going on that particular day, but that's what's going on. That does not include emails that go directly to an individual or to someone specifically, they're just the general email boxes. So when you type in permitting@bonitaspringscb.org, this captures that number. That's pretty much the, the update that we have. As you can see, we've got a couple of things going on, we're trying to work through it. Think that we have a little bit more to go in terms of, of this surge of permits that are coming through, and I think that what we're looking at next year is going to be a much different environment than what we've been dealing with before. So I'll probably be calling you all up in the next couple of weeks just to discuss what you'd like to see, what your priorities are, to make sure that everybody's on the same page as we go into the next fiscal year, how we're developing this service. So I don't know if you've got any questions, Mr. Mayor? So I don't know if you've got any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, well, you don't, you don't count all the phone calls and emails I sent you that's not in these numbers?
Those, those are just considered part of the job.
Regular contact, you know, with all these permits, some of these, sometimes people aren't happy, but they don't realize that the contractor has to apply for the permit. Contractor, he might be a carpenter, he's not a, he's not a liberal artist or whatever, he might not fill it out properly, and if it's, if it's turned down, the email goes to the contractor. Well, the owner calls me, says, "Where's my con, where's my permit?" Well, I said, "Well, it's in the contractor's vault at his court right now." So it's a matter of education, and I know you're working on it, you're doing very good.
And it is a mixed bag. Sometimes I know that you called or someone else has called, and, and it's just, we haven't gotten to that permit yet. You know, it could have been a couple of weeks, and it's just one of the ones, we just happen to have been busy. Other times, you've already sent out comments, or it's already been ready to, to issue, and they just haven't picked it up yet. So it kind of runs the whole gambit in terms of, of where particular permits are at particular times. We're working our way through, we're trying to do our best, we're trying to create some efficiencies that, that we didn't have before, just to make this a smoother process. Hopefully, by the time we start seeing permits decline from this restoration, we're, we're pretty good at this, and we are even better when we're on the tail end, so.
And your permit for restoration is free?
If it is a Hurricane Ian-related permit, there is no fee associated with that, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. And that will continue as long as you all, as a council, decide you want it to continue.
Don't be afraid to apply for a permit, folks.
And those permits can just be dropped off, you don't need to wait in the lobby. We have a box that just gets permits left in there, you'll receive an email saying that it's when it's been entered and when everything's ready to go, and then you have you or your contractor call in the inspections when they're ready.
You do, you do need to get a permit.
Yes, sir.
And you do need to have an inspection to make sure it's done properly?
Yes, sir. And depending on what the work is done, depends on the type of inspections that are required, but we're...
How many inspectors do you have? You've got thousands of permits, you inspect most of them?
Seven. So...
You inspect most of them, or all of them?
All of them, yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir.
John, this is an unusual question. What happens or who gets the reports on the FEMA trailers or the state trailers? We know where all those are located, correct, in the city?
Yes, sir.
What if one is abandoned? Got a situation possibly where an older client was moved to a nursing facility, the trailer's still there? Who reports that?
That's a good question. I think it would depend on, it would, we'd start with who, who issued the trailer. Was it the state or was, was it FEMA? We could probably work backwards from there.
So we need to give you an address?
If you give me an address, I can help work back, backwards from there.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, John. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. My other update is I received a request from Lee County staff. At the previous meeting, you authorized staff to draft a letter regarding the project of the Larry Keiker berm to our Florida legislative delegation. They are asking if it's possible for us to do the same to the federal delegation as well. They are gonna seek federal funds for that, that project. So if we could have a motion of approval, staff would draft the letter for the mayor's signature.
Motion moved. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick?
Aye.
Thank you. April 19th, we will be back to our regular schedule at 9:00 a.m. We don't have any pending zoning issues, and we've moved the ordinance reading to the evening on the 3rd, so that will be our next meeting. Also, at the...
Wait, May 3rd is our next meeting?
No, May 4th would be our next evening meeting. April 19th will be our next meeting at 9:00 a.m. And we'll be coordinating if we'll bring another CIP workshop. If we do, that would be right after following the council meeting. Also, at a previous meeting, Councilmember Fullick had asked for a short list of accomplishments from Hurricane Ian, in looking at some documentation from other communities and what a website that Lee County has. We'd like to start working on a Hurricane Ian update that continues, provides information regarding what John just provided, regarding some of the grant programs we're looking at. So we're gonna be putting together more of a thorough list, and then we'll also have a shorter list as well. So we're continuing to work on that, and then we'll send that out to all of you as soon as it's prepared. And then, beyond that, I just wanted to welcome Michael to his first meeting, and thank him for being with us, and also want to express my appreciation to Brenda for stepping up to the plate in the, in the interim as well, so.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council's report. I'll start out with, if you went down Hickory Boulevard last month or so, if you noticed between Access Three and Access Five on the mangroves, were just filled up with debris, but there's been an army of people on Saturdays that come in there and clean it up, and it's piles on, they're, they're done cleaning up the mangroves as of yesterday, the big piles are like eight foot high of debris that they pulled out of the mangroves are gonna be picked up pretty soon. But I'd like to give a shout out to all those people that walk through all that mud and stuff to get that stuff out of there, and I really appreciate that, and I don't know who, who organized it or not, but I'd like to say thank you. Any other comments? Yes? Jamie?
Jamie would like to...
Shout out to the gun. Okay, all right.
Just let everyone know, the next meeting, I think it's the 19th, I'm gonna be at a work conference and not able to attend. I'll be in meetings that morning, so I can't even call in, so I just wanna let you know.
Okay.
That's when we're doing all the district one funding.
Probably. That would be my last.
Thank you, Nick. Yeah, a few things, wanted to report, that I attended the MPO meeting, it'll be three weeks ago, this coming Friday. The MPO considered the Rails to Trails proposal. As an alternate, I sat in on the meeting along with Fred, and Fred drafted a motion that ended up passing unanimously, that the, the MPO approved moving to the next step, which is the PDNE study of the Rails to Trails project. This is exactly what MPO staff wanted to do, they accepted the feasibility report, so that was good news. With respect to the Resiliency Task Force, I attended that meeting in March. Resiliency Task Force has been tasked with the, by the county commission, to come up with a plan for the $1.1 billion CDBG grant that has been awarded to Lee County. The focus of that grant will be on workforce housing, that seems to be the primary objective. That's been a goal for a long time by a number of communities, to be able to find ways in which people who work in this, in a community can also live in a community instead of enduring an hour and a half commute, it makes it for a stronger community. Money's also available to supplement our buyout program along Quinn Street, and there's also money available for infrastructure projects that might be necessary to protect workforce housing and housing in general, such as stormwater management. It was discussed at the meeting that the Rails to Trails project is a 14-mile linear park, and that if the county and the cities get involved in that, that presents an opportunity to add an additional drainage system for the county, both from surges from hurricanes, but more importantly, probably, from sheet flow from our typical summer storms. So I think this is a, an opportunity to benefit overall for Bonita Springs and, and South Lee County that we want to pursue with the Resiliency Task Force and with the county commission. Those are, I think, important things for us to be working on. They did make a request that we name, the council name an alternate to myself, just so every, every city that's represented has an organization represented, such as the Sheriff's Department, and so the Fire Department, and so forth. Fort Myers has an alternate, but, so I'll make that request of council to, to, at this meeting, discuss and name an alternate. The other thing is that in connection with the Rails to Trails possibility of getting funding out of this CDBG grant, there's also possibilities of getting this thing funded out of 2020. 2020 takes in about $55 million a year. Most of that money is not spent, it's returned to the Lee County General Fund, and, you know, so the expenditures ever since the purchase of Edison Farms several years ago has been about $5 to $10 million a year out of the, out of the $55 million. So that, I would think the, that, that presents an opportunity for purchase of the land by 2020 funds. Also, the state has, if part of its 23 budget, has put in $250 million in the budget to, for land acquisition related to the Rails to Trails project. The only other thing I'd like to report is a conversation that I had with John Dahmer about the cell tower proposal we had last year, our last meeting, and where we talk about making it easier for cell tower operators, builders, to work. If you go through our ordinance now, it basically breaks itself down into two areas. The cell tower itself, the height and all that, is pretty easy to do. What's happened is that we have taken a lot of the requirements out of the Land Development Code and applied that to the cell tower ordinance in terms of what landscaping has to go around it, what kind of fencing and so forth. So what we're gonna, you know, what's gonna come forward at another council meeting is, here's the cell tower, what we have to do just for the cell towers, and then from all this other stuff, landscaping and so forth, what do we want to actually have to apply to cell tower sites? So John's working on that, I wanted to thank him for that. So that concludes my report. Okay. Fred? Are you there? Fred?
Yeah, I'm here.
Can you comment? Do you have a comment about what you, you guys did, what you're doing?
Would you repeat that again, please?
He wants a report from Tally, Fred. Tell him what's going on.
Well, it, on the phone, it's kind of difficult to do. I would say, my opinion is that between myself and Jesse and Jamie, we had a successful visit with a lot of the leadership that's in charge of helping us get our ass put through, and I'm optimistic that we'll get something, but I think we may not get as much as we've asked for, but I think we can get more next year.
About the Rails to Trails, did you, did anyone comment on that?
Yeah, I, the only thing is that, and I believe this is the right decision, Donald Scott is not going to put in for money for a PDNE study until there's an agreed-upon price, you know, the money. If he, if he does PDNE study before we have a price, before we have the land, he's concerned it may not happen, and furthermore, if it's very much time goes by between now and when we do get control, we have to redo a bunch of this stuff, because it rose across over the right-of-way, which would be the Rails to Trails, would have changed enough that you have to go back and do some touching up on the study. So he, he wants that, it'll be our next step, but in, but before he takes it, he wants that price agreed upon, and realistic that we're gonna get the money to, to buy it.
Very good. Anything else, Fred?
No, nothing else.
All right, thank you.
Just a, a brief report, I attended the TDC meeting, and the one takeaway I had was the fact that the room revenue, bed tax, is gonna be substantial, was substantially less, so the work that staff's doing on obtaining other monies and grants is critically important to our cash flow for the next couple of years. They did come down, I was surprised, and did a very comprehensive summary with the Downtown Business Alliance last Thursday, and that report is going to be available on the Downtown Business Alliance website, if anyone's interested in going to that.
Thank you, thank you. How about Laura Carr? Do you have a report for us today?
I do, I would be happy to be the alternative on the Resilience Task Force, and I attended the, I believe it was the Seventh Annual Asadwer Green Egg Festival. Great success, and all the money goes to charities here in Bonita Springs, and so it was happy to see, and people were actually thrilled with how the park looked, and happy overall.
That's it? Okay. Jesse, you usually have something to say, add to us today?
Yes, I do, thanks. On Wednesday, I will be meeting with Blake Lee to go over the truck ordinance stuff, to try to figure out what that's gonna look like for the next, next portion of this. Also, Tallahassee was, was quick, Jamie and I were up there for like 24 hours, so, it was, you know, I would say Rep. Batana, Rep. Rommel, Senator Martin, Senator Pasodomo, all very, very helpful. So if something happens, when we got there, I wasn't sure, but I felt like as, as we've left and as they've done follow-up over the last couple of days, it feels like, you know, something positive could come from this, and if not, it's really gonna set the table for something good for next year. I would say holistically, you know, maybe an overall rebranding of, of some of how it's presented, but I would say of the three, just to be candid, the only one that's still left in it is the golf course one. Okay. Not fully funded by any means yet, but now in, now we're, it's in play. It's on the Senate side, it's in play, House side, it's gonna be in play. So funding for, i-if we get a win this year, it'll be for funding there, and then there'll also probably be resiliency dollars, or there'll probably be dollars for the Quinn Street area too, from a different bucket, but that's not, that's not the same as this. And then last, I just wanted to, when I saw we hired Mike Sheffield, I was shocked. He's awesome. He, I had the honor of working with him when I worked for Kirk Clausen years and years and years ago. Mike Sheffield was the Communications Director for Collier County, so the, that's a huge county, and there's a lot of comms out of there. Really, staff always loved him, he worked for Leo Oaks, if you all remember him, tough guy, you know, tough guy, and one of his sons actually interned for our office for years, and just all-around really good guy, full of integrity and just hard work, and I was, it was a steal. I was, I was excited to see it, and welcome to Bonita by. Thank you, thank you.
I guess that's it. Everybody got a chance? Amy, you had yours?
Jamie.
Jamie?
I, I don't...
Amy could come in, though.
I don't think, oh, oh, Mayor, sorry?
Yeah, I don't think we had an appointment yet as an alternate, so...
Okay, recommend, can I nominate Fred Forbes?
When you do an appointment, now?
We need, you need one because...
Did you have a agreement or anything about this?
No.
It's just a request for...
It was on, it was included.
An email that, yeah, we sent an email to you all, because it was after the publication of the agenda, that Lee County had requested that you provide an alternate. We did, we did inform staff that we would not have it for their Tuesday Board of County Commission meeting, but we did say we'd try to get it at this meeting.
Yeah, who, who wants to be appointed?
I...
I'd like to nominate...
I nominated myself, and Jesse's nominating Fred.
Yes. Do we have a second for either nomination?
A second, Fred?
Roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Hey, Fred, come on in, Fred.
Try to prove yourself.
Councilmember Forbes.
Fred, you got a vote?
Well, it carries anyway.
Aye.
There you go, Fred.
Aye.
Aye, motion, motion carried. Okay. Public comment, any public comment? Rails and Trails to Rails, and Rails to Trails? Good afternoon.
Hello.
Morning, morning.
How are you?
Morning.
Thank you. My name is Emily Porter, and I'm a resident of Benita Springs. I have lived here full-time for 15 years, and then three years before that, part-time. Most of you know me as one of the tall Burt girls, but I am the one that's actually under six feet tall. I have some positive news to share with you, and I was going to tell you about the MPO meeting, but evidently Chris has already filled you in on all that, so I'll just give you some quick updates on the Friends of the Benita Estero Rail Trail. We have over 2,600 members right now, and here's the really good news, is we have over 20 homeowner associations endorsements, which is really good, so the community's really getting together on that. If you want to see the list, it's on our website, which is benitasasterorailtrail.com, so please check it out. We've got lots of new information and a fact page that you can send people to if they've got questions about the rail trail, so that's really helpful. You know, I, once again, I was going to tell you about the wonderful MPO meeting that we had, and I just want to say that, you know, I've been lucky enough to have had one-on-one conversations with most of you on this council, and I just really appreciate the time you've took to talk to us, but more so, I just really want to say how much we appreciate your enthusiasm and your support on this project. It means a lot to us, and I think it means a lot to the community. Obviously, it's a very popular endeavor. If you have any questions for us, we are now talking about important issues like how the trail is now causing some flooding and how, when we can get a hold of that land, how we can make it better so that we can mitigate some stormwater runoff. So that's really important, and I'll come back and I'll share that information if that comes, becomes available. So that's what we're doing now, is just more research on how this can help our community. So thank you very much. I'm just going to leave some business cards over here so that you have my direct phone number, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Come on, Ben. What's wrong?
Happy Easter, happy batch.
Well, anything else, anything else, anything else? Going once, going twice, we're adjourned. Thank you.
That's our shortest.